United States, America, and we are proud of what we stand for. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, please introduce themselves. Yeah, Secretary of Transit, sorry.
Calvin Brown, District One.
Anthony DiMaggio, District One.
Jody Zilski, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
Tell clerk Teresa Padra.
Mayor Kent Hocken. A moment of silence for troops on active duty. Thank you. Item number one, Dave.
Dave, evolve our website.
Yes, if I could just take a minute to introduce. A number of years ago, it was decided that we needed a task force to create a marketing effort for the city of Bristol. And it was put together, and we've had some terrific meetings, we've met for a long time. And what I'd like to do tonight is introduce Mark Walersiak, who probably none of you doesn't need an introduction. But Mark is our brand manager for the city, and he's been given a limited amount of time tonight because what he wanted to do is make sure we introduced the tool that has been created that is going to be used to help market the city. And the big thing with this, when he finishes, is that we'd like each and every one of you to think of how you can use this tool and add more value to it. So this could be, what we'd like this to be is the spokes thing for the city. We would like this, anything that's going to happen in the city, we want it to go through this website. So, Mark, I don't want to take any more time, I would like to introduce.
Thank you, Dave, and I was a little close, right? So I want to thank the mayor and the council for inviting us today to speak about the accomplishments that we've had with the joint marketing, accomplishments that we've had with the joint marketing partnership between the city and the chamber, these recent accomplishments, and also where we're going to go in 2016. Also, as a marketing committee, we discussed that it's probably important for us to kind of restate the purpose of our initiative, and that's really to put the city in a good light, to instill pride and excitement, awareness and interest in our community, ultimately to encourage community participation in economic development. So the question was, how do we do that? And it's through awareness. And how do you create awareness? So you need to build a foundation of materials and distribution channels to be able to espouse deposits, things that we have to offer in the community, things like brochures, and maps, and social media, and web portals, which we'll discuss very shortly. Why do we want to do that? You know, why do we want to go through all this, to this effort? You know, we want to take the publishing power really back into our own hands, you know, because we know exactly how we want to tell our story. You know, throughout history, you kind of have to rely on other press and things to do your story justice, and sometimes they have a lot to cover, and sometimes they don't even get to your story, or do it in the way in which you wish it was done. So taking that publishing power through distribution is the way that we want to do that, and building content is how we want to do that. So with that in mind, you'll get a good idea as far as how we want to frame Bristol in a positive light, and really show authentically what we have to offer as a community through showing this video to yourselves. So if we can dim the lights really quickly, I'd like to show you a quick two-minute video that was produced in-house at the Chamber of Commerce for Bristol.
Welcome to Bristol. Bristol, the heart of Connecticut, just two hours from Boston, New York, and an hour from the shoreline. Bristol offers a unique women experience.
City vibe, small town vibe, you'll fit in no matter your age.
As a reader, you were rich with history, overflowing passions and life of experiences to enjoy. Beyond the rolling hills of Connecticut, that's where you'll find the magic of Bristol.
With an incredible 700-plus acres of park systems.
Inspiring museums and cultural programs.
And the oldest operating amusement park in North America.
Our art and entertainment will color you today.
And local food and drink is satisfying, exciting, and always say more.
Community events that leave a lasting memory.
We really do, at all.
Plus, we're a community that honors the brave.
A community that offers top-tier sports and recreation.
And world-class accommodations to suit every style.
But what if you wanted to stay even longer?
Well, there's neighborhoods to pair with any personality.
And places for all kinds of producers.
Top-rated school systems.
Ways to make an impact.
And plenty of places to worship.
So whether you're vacationing.
Passing through.
And staying a little longer.
Bring your heart to Bristol. Our heart is always open to your experiences. Bristol, give her the gift of heart.
Do you want the lights on, Mark?
You can clap, it's okay. Yeah, turn the lights on, please. Just want to give props to Jordan Dooey, a highly talented student and personal resident who put, you know, his heart into that effort. So as you can see, having, having things to really talk about your community in a positive light, that can really generate a positive reaction in terms of people who want to come to the city and interact with it. Just a couple of quick stats, since we, since we launched that video to accompany the portal, it's gotten over 5,000 hits on YouTube, and since we direct uploaded to Facebook last Thursday, it's received 25,000 hits and over 600 shares. Those of you who are familiar with Facebook, that is a lot. So people are sharing it, not only people in Bristol, but also those who had lived here at one point, you know, and they're showing their pride in their community. So 30,000 hits in total, these people have a better opinion and idea of what our community is all about. Now getting to distribution and the portal, you know, there's lots of great events, organizations to join, you know, businesses to frequent in the town, but you have to kind of look in like 100 different places and different social medias and websites to really get a good picture of what it is that we have to offer. So we thought to ourselves, why don't we really put this all in one area for people, very simple, straightforward? It's a streamlined path for people to become more aware in order to support the locality. So without further ado, I'd like to direct your attention also to the screen. I'm going to do a very quick, high-level view. I invite everybody to go to bristolallheart.com. This is a new website. We're soft launched since a couple of weeks into December, and up here, it's probably really difficult for you to see, but there's four things primarily that we want the portal to focus on, is things to do, the different events in town, Social Square, which is the positive stories of heart programs and things of that sort happening in the community, as well as the Civic Portal, which is the gateway for people to volunteer and make an impact in a positive way. This is sort of self-explanatory splash page, a place where, you know, people can view the video that we just saw, ways to interact with our social media, and to share the site with your friends. Obviously, you know, this is very important to share these things with the people in the community, but there is a tourism element to what it is that we do, so we want people to kind of see the pretty pictures in Bristol, and also have an opportunity to download the destination guide brochure that we had developed within the past few months. Things to do in Bristol, these are the static attractions in town, from your food and drink to thrills and fun, culture and entertainment. We really broke this down categorically based on people's moods and interests. So if you clicked into food and drink, quite simply, it's just the inventory of all the different food and drink in town. So you can literally go in and filter into farms, or cafes, and bakeries, whatever it is that you're interested in. Moving, moving out, events, a huge thing. We want this to be a centralized community calendar. Sometimes it's very difficult to get an idea of what it is that's going on in town. So you have here on the homepage, on tap, these are events that are happening tonight or next. Bristol Eastern is having their annual fashion show tonight, for those interested. This week, just an event that we want to bring extra attention to that's happening in this week. Look for maybe a large event that we also want to put in front of people. Of course, you'll notice the map here of Bristol. You'll see geographically tagged, there are these events. We want to provide an extra layer for people to be incentivized to go to an event if it's right around the corner. If it's down the street or two minutes from you, why wouldn't you want to go and support it? And if you click it, we made this site very mobile-friendly, tablet and mobile-friendly. So if you clicked on the address in these different pop-ups, it'll route your directions from your smartphone or your tablet to the location. So there's no excuses now not to go to the duck race and other places. You like that, Cheryl?
I do like that, thank you.
And then, obviously, you can go and dig into the many layers of the site, seeing all the different events. This community calendar here, this is just a quick burst. If you don't have the time to go through the entire site, all you got to do is click what's going on, you know, the week of January 11th, and you have an idea of what's happening. You know, maybe you have family that's coming in to visit, and you say, hey, you know, what's going on the week of the 18th? Look how many things are going on in Bristol. This is what we want to make people aware of. Heartbeat Blog, just quite simply a section of the positive stories of heart projects and programs that are occurring in the community. We want to inspire other people to really partake in the culture of heart, passion, and production married together. Chris Salz, 15-year-old with autism, had a holiday lights display, characters in his yard trying to get canned goods and clothing, for those who need it. Great stories like that, videos, self-explanatory. Kind of a window into our social media channels. We have Facebook, but also Twitter, Instagram, Pinterest, Google Plus and the like. You'll see all over the site, sharing all heart story. We want this to be an interactive experience. You know, we don't want to dictate the content to people, we want people to share, you know, the things, the positive things they see in the community. Attraction Spotlight, just some things, you know, based on a weekly basis, we'll rotate in, an event of the week, a group of the week, attraction of the week, food and drink of the week. So in this case, historical society, Barnes Nature Center, Hardest Bakery. That is a high level of the site that I want to kind of walk through. Of course, there's a lot more to it, you know, so that that'll be your homework tonight is to go check it out and have fun with it. I just want to share some statistics. Since launching, we haven't had a significant media campaign behind the launch of the portal. It is soft because we're still optimizing for mobile responsiveness, so we didn't want to go too far into advertising, but just organically for people who have the URL, over 3,300 hits so far, over 12,000 page views. The average time that people are sitting on the site is over four minutes. That, that's important because on average, most websites are less than one minute, and 55% of sites have people leave in less than 20 seconds. Social media is a major aspect to what we do. Obviously, we want the static portal for all the information to sit there in perpetuity for people to find it, but also we have to go where people are. And that's highly important, right? And social media total subscriptionship across, you know, all the Facebook, Twitter, Google Plus and all that is 2,200 in over, in just over a month. And the reach, combination of the videos, the posts, all these things that we're doing, we've reached 144,000 people in about a month. And then add in the views of the video, and you have 174,000 plus who have seen it. And so I just want to share those stats because we're really seeing now that there is a return, there are eyes on Bristol in a positive manner. And just quickly, I want to talk about where we're going in 2016, now that we have developed, you know, the site and some of the materials from the ground level. Obviously, we want to maintain the portal and the social media and ensure it's fresh and interesting. We're designing a workflow right now to be able to handle that. It's a significant amount of time and effort, as you can imagine. We want to make sure that we do it justice. And also, I wanted to talk tonight about how do we, you know, get a return on investment? Well, we're starting to see that, but how do we get more return on investment? Dave alluded to it, you know, the council, the folks in the audience right now, start sharing this site with your friends, with your family, with your constituents. It's very important. Also, in 2016, we're looking to work closely with the BDA, creating welcoming materials. We have, you know, the URL now to share with people, we have brochures. We're looking to create a one, two, you know, three-step, simple process for people looking to open a business, trying to become even more business-friendly. And Depot Square, that's a huge one. So we want to put some firepower behind making sure that we sell the project the way that it needs to be sold. And also, we have our eyes geared on a major event in 2016, and if everything goes right, then hopefully that's something that everybody will be able to enjoy, and that's what I have.
Mark, thank you very much. I know that it was difficult to get all the information in, and I know, you know, you have an eight-minute time limit, and I hope we met that, but if not...
It probably broke it.
It's definitely...
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
As you can see, Mark is very passionate about this, and obviously, we all should be. It's our city, if we don't promote it, who's going to? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
For me, I also say that the marketing committee and yourself have done a outstanding job with this website. It's unbelievable, and we have it also linked to the city, to our city website. And I second what Mark said, share it on your Facebook page, let's get it out there.
Thank you for your support as well.
Okay, item number C. Is anyone here from Fisher House or Devon Green?
Yes.
Presentation of plaque to Parks Department? Name and address for your record, please.
My name is Lloyd Street. Attorney at law has a law office here at 99 Noise Street, there on the corner of Bristol, Connecticut. We're here to present this plaque to Parks Department. Every year, we have a Bristol Half Marathon that we run here. Without them, we could not be successful as a outstanding organization.
Thank you very much.
Let's go over here and do a photo op.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's tight. It's not too often, that is tight.
Thank you.
Why not?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Good night.
Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on December 8th, 2015, and the special meeting on December 17th, 2015.
Who's in charge?
Second.
Motion, man, second. Discussion.
Just under discussion, did we have a couple of special to approve? There are, but they're actually in draft form.
That's fine.
You had the 20th submitted to you, but I didn't put it on there because I thought you might need more time, and the 30th is going to be coming your way, probably this week soon.
Thank you.
In the other discussion, hearing that all in favor, I oppose motion passes. Hello participation, Derek Chesniewski. Did I get that right?
It's only been six years.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Derek Chesniewski, 20 Faneway Avenue for the record. Not to pile on on the marketing task force and the great job that they've done, but just wanted to share a quick story. The other day, I was talking to someone about the new All Heart website in the video, and they said, man, you know, that, that video and that site, they really make Bristol look good. And I said, well, not really. It captures what Bristol looks like. It's just been so long for us to be able to find something that truly captures what Bristol's about, and that does. You know, it's not the police blotter, it's not the headlines that you hear, it's that. So kudos to all of you, and I've spent a long time coming, but you know, it's the Chamber of General, and Mark Walersiak, and Dave, and you've worked tirelessly to set up the young ones. So congratulations, it looks great, and I hope to just keep up that momentum. With that said, I also wanted to congratulate Councilman Brown. I heard you purchased a home, and that's a big milestone, and having another young professional in town that's, you know, laying some roots in investing here, that's commendable in that. I congratulate you on that. I did hear that it's not in your district, so I just wanted to see if you could clarify what the arrangement is there. I know that you apparently had closed on your home this past fall, so I just wanted to give you a chance to kind of set the record straight on your situation, just so that the public doesn't feel that they're kind of duped, that they elected someone who was planning to not live in the district that you represent. So if you could just shed a little light on that, I'd really appreciate it. And on behalf of all your constituents, too, I think you appreciate kind of knowing what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want me to do that now or under announcements?
Fine, whatever you want to do, I just wanted to make sure that you got a chance, because I'm getting a phone call, I said, no, I'm not Calvin Brown, I can't answer for him, so I prefer if you could just kind of...
Do we have anybody else under public participation?
Two more.
All right, why not do it under announcements?
Appreciate it. Right, thank you, guys, that's all.
Thank you. Sean Roost. Sorry, you have two cameras now going?
Yes, I do. I don't want to miss anything.
We've got to get you a press pass.
Or a bigger battery, then I won't need two cameras. Good evening, Sean Roost, 53 Lancaster Road. I don't know if you guys are aware of what's going on at the Lysium. Anybody know what's going on at the Lysium tomorrow night?
It's a, it's a public hearing, something called NEC Future, that's New England Corridor, and it's a joint effort between the USDOT and the Federal Railroad Administration. And what they're looking at is they're looking at a transit corridor from Washington DC to Boston. There's actually three different proposals that they're looking at. One is a $9 billion proposal, which is just leaving everything the way it is, just maintaining the rail lines that we have. There's a second proposal that's going to cost between $116 and $121 billion, and the third proposal is going to cost between $258 and $293 billion. And that's happening at the Lysium tomorrow night, between 4:00 and 7:00 PM tomorrow afternoon. I also wanted to discuss something that's called Transportation 2040. It's a CRCOG publication, and in that publication, it describes operational costs of the CT Fast Track as requiring a $12 to $15 million a year subsidy from the state, which is very high, I feel. And the other half of the development that the governor is doing, which is probably holding Obama's wife's hand now, or she's patting him on the back, is affordable housing in the state of Connecticut. Basically, since Malloy's been elected, we spent nearly $500 million on affordable housing. 1,795 units in Bridgeport, 2,276 units in Hartford, 1,993 units in New Haven, 997 units in Waterbury, which costs $56 million, and 2,500 in Eastern Connecticut. Basically, the other thing that I want to discuss has to do with the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Mayor, I know that you normally speak on behalf of the CCM when they call you, and most of the times, it has to do with fighting against unfunded mandates. What I found is the CCM usually represents the municipality when they advocate one way or the other, and that's why they call on the mayors, but in this instance, CCM released the publication, and it's called Regional Cooperation for More Viable Connecticut: The Sharing Economy Among Towns. And what this is going to do is, what they're asking the state to do is to foster regionalism. They want to empower the council and governments to make lane use decisions on regionally significant projects, being that Depot Square is in a regional center, and I'm very concerned that we might lose control of the development. So what I did was, I'm going to have a public forum next week, on Wednesday, the 20th. It's going to be at the library in the meeting room. I'd like to encourage any members of the council, if you care about what the residents think, not just what the members of the opposing party that weren't invited to wherever, care about what the residents think, the residents are going to want answers to what's going on in Depot Square, and if you could show up, send me an email on my website, it's on opengovernmentproject.com, there's a little link, or you can email civics@opengovernmentproject.com to let me know if you're going to be there. If you are, I will moderate it, I'm not going to let, I'm not going to let it be out of control, okay? Thank you for your time.
Sean Levin, Bristol Firefighters Union, IAFF, Local 773, Mayor Kent Hocken, members of the council. I stand before you tonight, there's an item on the agenda tonight, item number 15, which speaks to the tentative agreement between the union that I represent, firefighters here in Bristol, and the city of Bristol. And behind me, there's a few folks standing there, and they're all in support. And I just want to make a statement on if there were some people in the city that may have been betting against us, you and I, Mayor, in the last few months. And I actually want to commend the mayor and his team, and my team, for exemplary government on how we can come together and get a job done, even though we have a difference of opinion. And so I urge the council to support item number 15. We think it's a fair deal, and I think, you know, I'd like to say thank you, the team, specifically the mayor, the personnel director, Fire Chief Kalikowski, we're all involved, as well as my team, and, you know, it's not, no one's 100% happy, but it's government, and it's good government, and I want to thank you for that. Sean, I want to appreciate, appreciate you coming up and saying that, and we did have some heated moments, but we got it done, and heated moments are to be expected. Thank you. Thank you. Announcements standing by far left.
None tonight.
Your Honor, I have two brief ones. First of all, I want to congratulate the Bristol Business Education Foundation and its leader, Janina Detton, who's with us tonight. I always call her one of our Budweiser superstars. Education Foundation raises money from individuals and businesses in town, and it funds grants that are put forth to it by educators, teachers in a classroom, and administrators. Last week, they had their funding meeting, they made 19 grants for $15,000. The reason I want to congratulate them is, if you were to witness what happened at the meeting, the enthusiasm of the teachers and the administrators, the work that I'm sure goes on every day in a classroom, you'd both be encouraged by what you've seen, and you would have been proud of the work that I think these teachers are doing for the kids at Bristol. The second thing, last week, last month, I plugged The Taste of Bristol, it's a fundraiser by the West End Association. It's a great, it's a great fundraiser for $5. There's a list of 36 local restaurants you can go to and get a discount if you purchase this. It helps the West End Association, it's done such good work in the West End, and it helps other local restaurants. You know, during a campaign, a few people asked me, how do we get more restaurants in Bristol? And the answer is quite simple, you go and make them successful. And this is part of the plan, I think, by visiting our restaurants, make them successful, make others want to be part of that success, and that's how we grow. Let me also say, those are for sale in the mayor's office, as well as, who else has them? They're available, I think, Jim at this Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, Sausage Meat Market, and Hamlet, it's on us right now. Thank you.
What's on right now?
Yes, I have a few. From the Parks and Rec Department, they wanted to let everyone know that their second winter youth program registration is now open with a lawful registration for Learn to Swim. Programs and classes are to begin the first week of February. Their annual Frozen Float Family Night will be held at Dennis Malone Aquatic Center on Saturday, February 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that their leaf pickup operation is complete, Phase 2 renovations to Muzzy Field will start next week. The ice rink is set up at Stock's Playground. The Bristol Tramps Sports Reunion Committee has recognized the Parks Department and will receive a Pay It Forward Award of $1,000 towards upcoming games the department provides to the citizens of Bristol, and that ceremony is scheduled for April 8th. And two others. I wanted to let everyone know there's a community breakfast on January 18th in honor of Martin Luther King Day. This is at Bristol Eastern High School at 8:00 AM. Tickets are $10 each, and children are $5. And finally, the annual OM Show has held its auditions, but they are still looking for children ages five to eight. Rehearsals for the children begin in early February, they're going to be on a Sunday. This is the 75th show, put on by the Bristol Boys and Girls Club. It's directed by Ken Ferris and Mary Lynn Gagman. If anyone needs any more information on that, or would like their children to audition, please contact Ken or Mary Lynn directly, or you can contact me, and I'll point you in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to let everyone know that the 2016 DoubleTree Bristol Rialle Excravaganza is going to be going on on January 15th, which is this Friday, starts at 6:00 PM. It's going to feature designs by Bristol's very own Cathy Faber, as well as hors d'oeuvres, champagne, and weekend getaway raffles. So if those of you who are in the wedding mood, as am I, you should attend and see what we have to offer, okay? Thanks.
All right. Bear with me, I'm getting over COVID, so I'll do the best that I can. First announcement is, as I'm sure all of you are aware, tonight is President Obama's final State of the Union address, scheduled for sometime roughly around 9:00 PM. So hopefully, I'll be able to get to watch it, but I definitely encourage everybody to do that, see what the agenda for the next year is going to be. And on to the point brought up by Mr. Chesniewski. Some of you know, well, now all of you know, thanks to that announcement. I did, I did buy a house recently. I was in the market for it last year, and I'll explain to you the situation. My family and I were going back and forth about whether or not January at this meeting was going to be the time to talk about it, or February, we were leaning toward February, but that's okay, I can talk about it now. But it's bound to get a little bit personal, so I apologize if that makes anybody uncomfortable, but I'll tell you the story. So, most of you know that before I entered high school... Most of you know that before I entered high school, my parents separated, ultimately ended up in a divorce, and that changed our family situation and our living situation to some degree. The house that I grew up in on Ivy Drive, my mother and my brother and I stayed in, and that's where we lived. But in September or October of 2016, the financial support that our family unit has been receiving to be able to stay in that home will run out. So we were faced with a decision, well, what can we do to make sure that my mother has a place where she can live and be safe, and that's affordable for her, and a place for my brother to be as well? And so we started to explore these different options. It became clear that probably the best option for us was to purchase a two-family home, for me to purchase a two-family home, where my mother could live in a safe, rent-controlled environment, because that would be the property owner, and I could therefore control the rent. So it would be affordable for her for the rest of her life, and we could just rent out the other unit to keep, you know, to cover the cost of the mortgage on that property. So that was the plan, and that I would stay at the Ivy Drive House through September of this upcoming year, try and work on it a little bit, get it ready to be sold, or whatever we could do, if I could, if I were in a position at that point, in terms of my career, to be able to afford to live there by myself, I could do that. But it's become clear to my family and I that that is probably not a possibility. So, over this past holiday, we spent a lot of time talking with one another, trying to figure out what the plan would be, and we've come to the decision, or at least very, very, very near the decision, that we'll probably be putting our Ivy Drive House on the market, and we'll probably be doing it soon. And because I am still new in my career, and I'm not in the, frankly, I'm not in a financial place where I can buy a second home in the first district for me to live. I probably, frankly, can't even afford rent in an apartment in the first district. As you know, it just so happens that the first district of the city of Bristol that Tony and I represent, there's just not a lot of multi-family housing stock there. So it looks like eventually, probably later this year, I am going to be placed out of the first district. At that point, I'm sorry to say, especially to so many friends and supporters who I haven't been able to talk to one-on-one yet, and for that, you have my sincerest apologies. Something that I promised you was going to happen over the next couple of weeks. But regardless, when that house is sold, and I am no longer a legal resident of that district, I have no other choice but to resign my seat on the city council, which I will do then, and not before then. It's been a difficult time for my family, but at the same time, at the same time, it's really actually a happy thing, because I know that we're all going to be better off for it in the long run. And for those of you who have supported me in the past, I've got a feeling it's because you know I'm somebody that tries to do the right thing, and I know that this is the right thing to do for my family. And family comes first, and that's something that everybody in this room knows. So, that's the story. I apologize. I know it's a personal sort of thing, and it's an uncomfortable thing to talk about in this sort of a venue. I know it is. So I apologize for that. But, you know, that's what happens when you're an elected official. That's the sort of thing that's out in public. So I'm glad we were able to talk about it. If anybody has any questions for me, I'll be around after the meeting. Though, like I said, I would like to be back for the State of the Union, but I will be around and talk to you, and you can always call me, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number five. Any other one else? Item number five.
It's the consent calendar. There are eight items. Five A is to place on file an inquiry report for December 2015. Five B is the ordinance committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 4-5, Rooster's Penalty. Five C is to place on file a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the sale of 312 Oakland Street, as the city has no apparent use for it. Five D is to authorize Mayor Kenneth B. Cockain or active mayor to execute a contract with John Devaux Consulting LLC for $5,500 to prepare and submit a grant application for Drug-Free Communities Support Program, with half the cost paid by the Board of Education. Five E is a request to defer sidewalks at 39 Business Park Drive, owned by Uniprop AM LLC, referred to the Board of Education and Board of Public Works for Review, to approve, by that is, to approve the tax assessment freeze application for ROJ Recycling LLC for 409 Broad Street Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with restoration of a commercial building structure for Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57. Five G is to authorize Mayor Kenneth B. Cockain or active mayor to sign any and all documents associated with the submission of industrial storm water discharge permit applications at Department of Public Works facilities. And five H is to authorize the Mayor Kenneth B. Cockain or active mayor to sign any and all documents associated with the submittal of the 2015 Annual Report, required by general permit for the discharge of storm water from small municipal separate storm sewer systems in this ward.
Mayor, can I ask that we take D off the consent calendar, please?
Any other one come out? So can I have a motion to approve of item A, B, C, E, F, G, H? So move. Second. Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number D.
With regard to D, Your Honor, I'm just concerned that we're hiring a consulting company to do a grant application when we have a grant writer employed by the city. I just, I'm not understanding that expenditure, no, why it's necessary, I guess. I mean, obviously, the grant is, I'm assuming, important, but why a consultant is needed for that grant?
Because, Alina, do you want to speak to this? Alina is our Service Director.
Good evening. We were looking to hire a grant maker who is going to help facilitate us through a process, so it's not just writing the grant, it's actually going to be helping us facilitate our coalition to develop our action plan, and then give us the narrative. It's a very short turnaround time to apply for the grant, and we do plan on asking the city's grant administrator to help us along with this project, and if we're not successful this year, to come up with a plan on how we can reapply in future years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, item D?
Yeah, Your Honor, can I just ask how much the potential grant would be? Just so it's on the record, that's all.
We can apply for up to $125,000 a year for five years, so a total of $600,000. And at the end of the five years, we would be eligible to apply for five more years. The person that we're looking to hire has written these grants before for a number of communities in Connecticut with a lot of success, and has mentored those communities.
Thanks. If I could, I can just add one word by far. Is that $5,500 per year, or $5,500 for all the grants?
For one-time use.
This is a one-time expenditure to help us make the grant, develop our action plan. We should be completed with this by the middle of March.
This is also not new appropriations. This came out of your budget, that's already budgeted for in the Board of Ed, in the Bristol Board of Ed. So this is not new money we're looking to spend, it's already been budgeted and made.
Thank you.
And a motion to approve? So move. Motion made second. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number six, starting at my far left. Reports.
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. We talked about a motion in real estate. I just want to inquire of Melissa whether I should make that motion myself orally, or whether there is something. Okay. And I'm not trying to take the chair's position, but regarding the money that was paid for O'Connell and Bingham School, that motion we made at the end of our meeting in real estate. Okay? I'll make it anyway. At our real estate committee meeting, we talked about the fact that the city took in funds for the purchase, in other words, entity has purchased O'Connell and Bingham Schools from the city. It's about $219,000. It's not a tremendous amount of money, but it's also money that was not in the budget. And we, the real estate committee, wanted to recommend that the council recommend to the Board of Finance that that money be put towards the Memorial Boulevard line item. In other words, towards future renovations of the Memorial Boulevard School for the Community Cultural Arts Center. Again, we understand it's a drop in the bucket in terms of the funds that will probably be needed for that project, but we just wanted to show our support by suggesting that those funds could be earmarked for that.
So had a motion?
Motion to take the $219,000, or whatever the funds were received for O'Connell and Bingham School, and recommend that the Board of Finance earmark them to the Memorial Boulevard line item.
Second. Second. Motion made second. Discussion. Let me say that, first, the city has shown support for the project. We've allocated $400,000. I believe we just hired an architect, John? Did we just do that? We just hired an architect. That project is moving forward. I think the council will be overstepping its bounds in the Board of Finance's job to allocate where the money goes now, and that supports us. And a discussion. Roll call, starting at my far left, please.
Yes.
Your Honor, this, I have no idea of the details of this. It's not an agenda item, and I'm uncomfortable without further discussion with someone else. Can we table this and talk about it again? I feel uncomfortable voting on something. If you allow me to make a motion to table, you can?
It's simply a motion to ask the Board of Finance to consider putting the money towards that line item. It's not anything to vote.
I'm in the middle of the vote, so yes. No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Here votes no, motion passes. Anything else that committee reports? Council looking for you?
Not for me, thank you.
Mayor, briefly, you had sent over to the ordinance committee a request to look at the continuation of the Transportation Committee. We've invited some former committee members, some current committee members, who've shown some enthusiasm and some wherewithal. I'm meeting this week with Mr. Biselka and Mr. Winer to discuss the issue, whether it is or should be, as, you know, Atlantic Development is such a big part of our agenda this year. So we're having another ordinance committee meeting on January 20th at 5:00 p.m. If anybody has any input, and we'll report back, that's fine.
Great, thank you. Yes, I have a brief report on school readiness. I've been on the school readiness committee for just two months now, but I asked them to send me a report on dollars and cents about how important preschool and school readiness programs are. And I'd just like to take a few moments, because it's a significant amount of money that the city of Bristol saves. The school readiness grant brings in $2.8 million into the Bristol community. The Quality Enhancement Grant brings in another $25,024. The grant, the Child Daycare Care Grant, CDC, which is overseen by the grant manager, brings in $429,830. A total of $3.3 million comes into the city to use for preschool programs, which is a significant amount of money. This means that 454 children in Bristol can receive a quality early care and education experience at no cost to the city. The Quality Enhancement Grant supports our library to provide quality events for young children. The Parent and Child Center to provide free parent workshops. Our Family Resource Centers, who work with home daycare providers to assure that they're a quality. Because of the school readiness grant, Bristol Preschool Child Care Center was able to get a CHEFA funding to open their West Street site, and then to get bonding in the order of $3.2 million for the newest site to be opened later this year at the former Jennings School. Imagination Museum of Early Learning received the CHFE grant, funds to renovate the building in Pleasant Street. This is economic development, funding going into our city and improving the physical structures of childcare centers. These funds also allow the nonprofits and the Board of Education to employ teachers and support staff, many of whom are Bristol residents. And just as an aside, I'm sure all summer you probably saw signs around that said, "It's too late to wait. Reading to your child at least 20 minutes a day." I was involved in this three-to-three program some number of years ago, and again, what they found is if you take just 20 minutes a day and read to a child, it'll enhance their ability to read when they get to school. Having someone that I know personally that's a kindergarten teacher, they have significant problems with people that enter school that aren't ready for school, and it costs additional money to do that. So the benefit of preschool in Bristol is overwhelming, and I just wanted to let everybody know the significance, and I passed this out to everybody in the council before, so they have a good idea as to what we spend and what we get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, from the Memorial Boulevard School Building Committee. First, I wanted to let everyone know that the Corporation for the Board had their first meeting, and they set their meeting schedule as the second Tuesday of the month tonight, beginning in February. From 6:30 to 8:00, we're going to meet in the library, meeting room one. In addition, we have hired an architect, Smith Edwards McCoy. Everything should have been signed by the end of business today, yes, Senator? But we, we're talking at the meeting that the contract needs to be amended just slightly. The building itself could be eligible for historic tax credits, and if we take care of all the details of that now, we might be able to make sure we get approved for those tax credits later on. The tax credits would be approximately 25% of the approved capital outlay, so we don't know what exactly those tax credits will total at this point in time, but we're probably talking in the several million dollar range that we can use for the building itself, which would be less money we have to raise in the end. But in order to make sure we're doing everything correct at this point, and to apply those tax credits down the road, we need to add the additional funds for the architect now. That would be an additional $39,000 for the architect fee. Now, the Board of Finance had approved $400,000 towards the design fee, and that went towards the architect and the construction manager. We have only appropriated $280,000 at this point in time, so the additional $39,000 would only bring us to $319,000. Therefore, we're still under what the Board of Finance has allocated for this project. So therefore, I move to amend the contract to P16-017, Engineering Architectural Services Relevant to Renovations at Memorial Boulevard Community Cultural Center, with Smith Edwards McCoy Architects, P.C., in the amount of $39,000 for efforts relating to securing historic tax credits, and to authorize the mayor or active mayor to execute any documents necessary to execute said amendment.
Second. Motion made second. Discussion. Let me say that I think this is money well-spent at the beginning, even if we get a fraction of the tax credits, it'll pay for $39,000, so I think this was a good one. All in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Yeah? Council?
I just want to bring everyone up to speed, just very quickly, on the ordinance committee that I sat on with both Councilman Mel and Councilman Polesky. I'm very happy to report that we're able to put the rooster ordinance to bed. I just think, I just wanted to announce that, just because I know previously in my seat, you know, Chairman Eric Carlson was working very hard on that, and I'd just like to put that out there, that I'm happy that we were able to bring it to a close, and I'm sorry that he wasn't able to do it, but I'm happy we were able to do it. Something else that I just want to share, non-related with the motion to move the money that was just taken in with the two sales of the schools. I also want, I want to put it for the record that I'm in support of the Memorial Boulevard project, but I don't necessarily, and I don't mean to offend anyone, I understand what Councilwoman Fordy's doing, but I don't appreciate getting it thrown on my lap right at the council meeting. We haven't asked any other department within the city if they need the money, or if the money needs to go somewhere else, and if it doesn't, I guess we can probably gladly bring a motion to do so and move the money to the Memorial Boulevard project. But I just don't, that's why I voted no. I'd love to see the money go there, but I'm not going to vote yes with a five-second introduction, okay? So I just want to make that record straight. Thanks.
Council?
lab at Bristol Public Library, starting February ninth and continuing through April twelfth, so in the coming months, I'll continue to make that announcement as a reminder. Tax aid appointments are available Tuesdays from eight-thirty a.m. to twelve-thirty in the afternoon. There will be no walk-ins. Appointments may be made by calling the library at eight-six-oh-five-eight-four-seven-seven-eight-seven, extension two thousand. Again, that's eight-six-oh-five-eight-four-seven-seven-eight-seven. Free tax aid starting February ninth and continuing through April twelfth. So if you're a Bristol resident that could use that, it's a great success every year, and kudos to Debbie Prozo in the library for being able to provide that service to our constituents. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Unfinished business, starting from far right.
No, none for me.
None for me, Your Honor? Excuse me, none for me, Your Honor?
None.
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 Chair has none. New business, starting from far left?
None.
Your Honor, I'd like to ask that you present this motion for some work to be done over eight-ninety-four Middle Street, was brought to me by Mr. Malick, PDA. We'd like to ask a motion to enter into a contract with Novus Engineering, Inc., in the amount of thirty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars for completion of environmental assessments at eight-ninety-four Middle Street, consistent with the requirements set forth by the EPA and the Connecticut DEEP, and to authorize the mayor or the acting mayor to sign any and all documents for said contract as necessary.
A second.
Motion made second, discussion.
Can we just know what it's for?
Justice?
Justice.
Hi there. We've been working on eight-ninety-four Middle Street for years now. We own the property at this point. It's a contaminated property. We've gone through a phase one, a phase two, and most of a phase three. We brought what we had for a phase three. Environmental assessment up to the state, and I also talked with the federal government, and we need to complete a little more work. The joint board approved the funding for that just an hour ago, and this is now the contract to engage with the consultant and complete the work.
And the property, just for everybody else's identification, is where?
It's about fifteen acres directly across from ESPN on Middle Street.
Is that the old bureau?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anything else? No, thank you.
None.
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 Chair has none. Resignations?
There are no resignations.
Appointments? To reappoint Paul Strider in a four-year term to one-twenty-one, I'm sorry, one-twenty. Any word?
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty? Twenty-twenty, okay. Got it. Resume. Second. Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Politiker here, congratulations. Board of Fire Commissioners, to reappoint Sean Moore, three-year term to one-nineteen, and to reappoint Brett Belanger, section two-nine, two-nine resignation, an expired term to one-nineteen. Approve it.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Freedom of Information Administration Board, to reappoint Teresa Farina, three-year term to one-nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. First District District, to reappoint Stephen Vascolak, five-year term to one-two thousand twenty-one, and to reappoint Stephen Cohen, five-year term to one-two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Bristol Board of Library Directors, to reappoint Penis Alvatore, three-year term to one-nineteen, to reappoint Elizabeth Konowski, three-year term to one-nineteen, to reappoint Donna Papagen, three-year term to one-nineteen, and to reappoint Bonnie Letebico, three-year term to one-nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Landing Commission, to reappoint Anthony Dell for a re- section two-nineteen resignation, an expired term to seven-thirty-one-two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Police Benadil, police Benadil, to reappoint Detective Scott Hayden, two-year term to one-eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Landing Commission, to reappoint Anthony Dell for a re- section two-nineteen resignation, an expired term to seven-thirty-one-two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Police Benadil, police Benadil, to reappoint Detective Scott Hayden, two-year term to one-eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number eleven.
Resolution regarding amendment to 2015-2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan with referral to Board of Finance and the Bristol Resolution.
I have it. It hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan of 215-216 to transfer ten thousand dollars for residential rehabilitation, as single, and reprogram these funds to the Bristol community organizations for a warming center coordinator, as approved by the Bristol Development Authority at the December twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen meeting, is hereby approved. If further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, resolution, starting from far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number twelve.
Resolution regarding commitment of nine-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-five dollars in matching funds for Bristol adult education for grant through the Connecticut Department of Labor, Office of Workforce Competitiveness to support AEDAC program, and there is a resolution to read?
I can do that if my computer will cooperate. Being hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to commit to providing matching funds in the amount of nine-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-five dollars for Bristol adult education to be eligible to receive a grant through the Connecticut Department of Labor, Office of Workforce Competitiveness, that will support the AEDAC program, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents associated with this partnership, and to refer the matter to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd just like to say quickly, sort of my other hat outside of the city council, what I do professionally, I'm associated with some of what's happening in workforce development in the state right now, and I actually have gotten a chance to work with Larry Covino a little bit through the Bristol Technical Advisory Council, led by the Chamber and the Main Street Community Foundation and others, and I've gotten to learn a little bit about this program, and I just have to give so much kudos to Mr. Covino and to the folks associated with this EDAC program, because this is the future of workforce development, and it's the way that we can bring people that may have slipped through the cracks before to a point where they can really build excellent, in-demand careers for themselves and for their families. So this is, you talk about something to be proud of in Bristol, this is one of those things, so very exciting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing resolutions, starting from far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number thirteen.
Resolution regarding approval of grant application up to ten thousand dollars to the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for federal fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant. There is a resolution to read?
Sorry, read it.
Being hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, by the filing of a grant application above the ten thousand dollars to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the federal fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant funding is hereby approved, and that the Mayor Kenneth B. Cocaine or acting mayor is hereby authorized to enter into, deliver, and execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application slash grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out in terms of this application slash grant. If further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, vote, starting from far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item forty.
Resolution regarding approval of grant application up to twenty-five thousand dollars with a city match of twenty-five hundred dollars to federal emergency management agency for assistance to firefighters grant, and there is a resolution to read?
Okay, read that. Oh, David, you had it. I'm good. Being hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, by the filing of an application to the federal emergency management agency for an assistance to firefighters grant, for up to twenty-five thousand, with a city match of up to twenty-five hundred, it's hereby approved, and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute such application, and any and all other documents relating to this application slash grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents. If further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, resolution, starting from far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item fifteen.
Executive session regarding tentative agreement between the City of Bristol and Bristol Firefighters Local Number Seven-Sixty-Three.
Mayor, it'll be our office, the personnel director, and I assume the chief is going to come in with... Maybe? You want, you need the chief? No? Okay, no chief.
Okay.